Welcome to the City of Klamath Falls, city and county joint work session Wednesday, October 12th, 2022. It is 5:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilor Toffo? Commissioner Hensley?
Here.
Councilor Blain?
Yes.
Commissioner Minty?
Here.
Councilor Steenberg?
Here.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Here.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under legislative item, we're going to be discussing the water delivery program. And this was requested by Commissioner Minty, and I will let her report.
All right. Thank you. It's nice to see so many people here for this meeting. It's good to see faces in the audience. As many may be aware of, but I won't make the assumption that everyone is aware of, we have been in an emergency response effort since July of 2021 related to dry, drying and failing domestic wells in Klamath County. What we thought was going to be a very short-term emergency response effort over the summer of 2021 has turned into a now 16-plus-month effort combining Oregon Emergency Management, Oregon Department of Human Services, the Governor's Office, Klamath County, the City of Klamath Falls, and some others that I'll probably forget to name. But to say it very simply, it has been a collaborative, what has turned into more of a long-term effort. And we are trying to move us from the emergency response stage to a recovery phase, or in other words, a phase where we can help people be resilient and taken care of on their own. But part of that means coming out of the emergency response piece with infrastructure set up so that as people continue to have dry and failing wells, as they have for the last 16 months, that there's at least a place that we can direct people. What we've been doing thus far, and I will have one of our partners from the state is going to spend about five minutes giving a brief overview as well, because that will help put some of it in context. But essentially, what we have been doing is a twofold approach. One is, again, the real emergency response, that is giving the state, the state has been paying for 500-gallon tanks for people's homes, and then a water delivery service. This cannot go on indefinitely. It is slated to end at the end of February 2023, after it has already been extended once. And the other portion of the program is the county working with many partners was able to secure two separate tranches of money from the state emergency board, one for $4 million to help people repair their wells, and more recently, an additional $5 million. We've set up a grant program to help people do that. But one of the challenges has been that oftentimes, it can be upwards of 12 months to get a well driller to your home. So again, what we are looking to do, and why we are calling on you today, City of Klamath Falls, is we are looking to set up infrastructure that will allow us, all of us collectively as a community, to direct people as they continue to have this issue. And part of that infrastructure would be perhaps the ability for the City of Klamath Falls to sell water to private water delivery service that then the public can buy. As you're well aware, my fellow electeds, the Klamath County does not do water. While we have a Public Works Department, water is not within our, is not within the scope of what we provide at the county. So you have been very gracious and have entered into a partnership with us over the last year or so to allow us to use the fire hydrant at the county road shop for those water trucks to fill up at, and then they deliver. But again, we're looking for something long-term, and long-term doesn't necessarily entail using a fire hydrant at the county road shop for water delivery for folks. So that's really why I wanted to call this meeting, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for willing, being willing to have a joint meeting with us. But my hope, and the hope of some of the stakeholders that I've worked with at the state, is that the city would consider some sort of change in either, I'm not sure if it's in your, where it is written, that you don't sell privately, you don't sell water to private delivery services. But my understanding is that's in code, or, and I might not be using the right terminology, but our hope and request is that you reconsider that and would perhaps allow some kind of ability for these water carriers once the state-supported effort slash emergency effort ends, to buy water from you, to transport to homes that may be without a well and on a list to get a well drilled, or something of that nature. So with your permission, Mayor, I would like to have Rhonda Nyseth from ODHS give a brief presentation that explains the state, what the state's been doing, and how many people we're talking about. I always know if I'm going to agree to something, I want to know the breadth of what we might be talking about. So Rhonda can best address those numbers.
Very good, Rhonda. Just make sure your little light's on.
There it is.
Very good. And go ahead.
Thank you for allowing me to speak before you today. I'm sorry, I thought this whole meeting was just about water, so I brought a lot of data. So I'm going to thin down this as we go along, since Commissioner Morris was gracious enough to give you guys a little back history on our event. So we'll probably... Here is our full list of partners, for anybody who is curious about who all has been helping with the water mission since its creation of July of 2021. I'll just cover the dry well complaints. So starting in 2021, we started receiving dry well complaints at the Water Master's Office here in Klamath County. In 2021, we had 192 complaints. Thirty-six of those people currently that we're aware of resolved their issue somehow and didn't tell us, so they're unknown. They are no longer receiving services from us. However, they either resolved their issue on their own, they just didn't report back to us. We're not really sure what happened with those folks. And A were people that had irrigation wells, it was their well to their shop, or maybe it was their second home, like a vacation home, it was not a primary residence. Some people, four people resolved their issue in the year. Eight people are still struggling with financing, whether that's with the grant program or getting a loan to finance the drilling of a new well. We have eight people that successfully deepened their well in 2021. We have 23 households that are currently functioning on limited water, so that means that their well is producing a little bit of water, but not a lot of water, not as much water as they'd like to have, and we do serve some of those folks with occasional water deliveries. We have 31 people that were waiting on a well to be drilled. We had 30 people that managed to lower their pumps and have water again. And then we had 40 people that were able to drill a new well in 2021. What does unknown mean? So unknown people were people that moved and left the residence, people that don't have voicemail, their voicemail's full, they're not calling us back when we reach out to them, and they left messaging, and we never returned a call. And we had 36 unknown people from that 2021 year, and I'll cover a little bit more about unknown as well. So in 2022 complaints, we have 235 complaints for 2022. We have five people that reported that their wells recharged. We had one that is looking to extend to the City of Merrill, and then we have two that managed to extend to the lines in City of Merrill or City of Mullen. We have three that just had a pump issue, so their electrical system went out, and they just had to replace it. We have 74 unknowns still, because they don't have a plan yet, because they either just became a water consumer, or they're just a few months into this and don't know what they're going to do yet. We have 15 people that, once again, it didn't apply, so second homes, ag wells, et cetera. And then we have five people that resolved it, nine people that are still struggling with financing, and then five that deepen their wells. We have 66 people right now that are struggling, or have a limited well, so they have a little bit of water, but not enough, and some folks we are serving. And then 16 people who have lowered their pump, and 30 people this year that managed to drill a new well. Tanks given since 7-1. So ODHS purchased 360 tanks for Klamath County, and 220 were given out by the State Waters Master's Office before Office of Emergency Management for Klamath County and DHS started managing that program. The Water Master's Office, the workload was too much, and we asked it to shift it to Klamath County Emergency Management and ODHS. And that person, the ODHS staff person is myself. And then Stacy Todd is who I've been working with at Klamath County Emergency Management. So since July 1st, when we took over, we've given out, there were 140 tanks less, and we've given out another 97 tanks just since July 1st. We currently have 35 tanks sitting in the Klamath County yard, and then six of those are sitting at Walker Range. We have tanks at Walker Range now, which is a fire protection agency out in Crescent, because we got a serious influx of calls from North County, because a lot of North County wells started going dry. And some of those North County people were not being served initially. So there was about 60 of them out there that had no water or limited water for over a year. And now we also have 250 more tanks on order. So tanks, tanks are 500 gallons. You get a tank per two people in your house. So a family of four would get two tanks, and the family of six would get three tanks. We have one family of nine that we're serving. Here's the water delivery. So Milky Way is one of our water delivery companies, and then Rockin' for R is our other delivery company. So in '21, Milky Way was serving 55 customers. Twenty-two of those customers ended for them for some reason, so they either canceled their water service or didn't feel they needed it anymore. Eight of them are still waiting for a well to be drilled. Nine of them managed to get new wells. And then we have eight people that are functioning on limited wells, and so sometimes we serve them and sometimes we don't, just based on their water production of their well. And then we still have four people struggling with financing, 11 are unknown, and two managed to lower their pump or deepen their well. And then Rockin' R surged 31 people last year with same scenarios. This year, Milky Way is serving 19 customers, and Rockin' for R is serving 52 customers. And then you can see the same breakdown of, you know, who's waiting for a well driller, new wells that have been dug, and themselves trying to get off the program. Unknown getting. In the unknowns, if we don't know what happened with those folks, because they won't call us back, we found out we have four people that we don't know what's going on with them, but we're serving them with water. So next week, we'll be reaching out to those folks a little more and seeing if we can get them to communicate with us, because we do need to know what the plan is, because we can't have people just getting water from the state indefinitely. So for the most part, it looks like most people have plans. And then here's your grant funding numbers from the grant money that we managed to procure from the E-Board with the state, with the help of the county and the Governor's Regional Solutions Office. So the initial ask was, or the initial grant was $4 million. 217 domestic wells were anticipated to be remedied with this grant funding. And then grant payments were arranged from $339 to $40,000, which was the cap of grant funding. And then as of today, the number of completed grants and remedied domestic wells has been 103. County reimbursement total as today is about 1.2 million, it's almost 1.3 million. And then two applicants have obtained city water hookups and infrastructure. And then the anticipated future need is about 407, or 470 totally impacted domestic wells. And the cost, so water delivery in 2021 was $254,000, and on tanks, the state spent $58,000. And then water delivery, January through June of this year so far, has been $371,000, and the tanks have cost us $55,000,000. So that's the state's cost or investment that they've made into the water delivery program. And then there's fun photos of water tanks. So that is myself and Stacy Todd, they're with the red truck delivering water tanks to homeowner. That is our field of tanks at Public Works. And that green truck there is one of the water tanks. And then that's the Sheriff's Office Emergency Management staff helping us deliver tanks at Walker Range.
And one, thank you, Rhonda. And then one last point I'll make before turning it back to you, Mayor, is just to be clear on a couple of things. The county is involved in that we requested the state become involved. So basically, what you can do as a county is tell the state, hey, this is an emergency that we can't manage on our own, which we did. And the state steps in then and provides resources. The county is managing the two grants received from the state E-Board. The county has provided the spot at Public Works for the storage of the tanks and that fire hydrant, but that is city water that we've been reimbursing the city for. And then the state has done the tank program and has managed the program. I will say as my final thought, that in addition to being hopeful that the city would consider selling, perhaps selling water to these delivery services, once the state stops paying and we move out of the emergency response effort, the other alternative or potential solution that's been talked about is the creation of a water fill station. And Robbie, Robbie West has been great to work with. I do want to give him a shout out. Robbie and Jeremy Morris, our Public Works Director, have, we've all been talking collectively about the value of potentially a water fill station where people could pay, but that would need to be created. And of course, there's, I'm sure Robbie would like the county to do it, but again, the county doesn't do water, so it makes, it makes more logical sense for that to be something the city would do. But I think, and I don't speak for my colleagues, but I think the county would support perhaps partnering on some level, at least to help with the creation of it. But it would probably need to then be a city asset. And with that, I will stop talking. I will turn your meeting back to you, Mayor Rustball.
I'd just like to add something to, with the interest of cost savings, when I started working with the program, you know, the folks in Salem don't understand the demographics of Klamath or the geography, right? So we've been working with...
Understand.
They don't understand why it takes so long for the water truck to get from Klamath Falls full of water to Mullen and deliver to the homes and come back, right? Like, that's not really cost-effective transportation of water. So we've been working on developing contracts with the City of Merrill and the City of Mullen. The City of Mullen contract just finalized, so the water company will be refilling in Mullen and serving homes in Mullen and Merrill, rather than coming back and forth to Klamath and taking water out of that county yard. And then the North County residents, so that's your Chamalt, Crescent, Beaver Marsh people, the truck lives in Klamath, so it fills up in Klamath and serves some folks, and then it goes to Crescent Water District, and we buy water from Crescent Water District to refill that truck. We've done that 18 times so far, because we just started that in August. So we're starting to expand where we're getting our water from, so that it's not all just coming out of that county yard. So, and that's something, it took a long time to get that going, and government contracts take forever. But that is something we've been working on actively and finally have going now. Do you guys have any other questions for me?
Questions, comments? Thank you, Rhonda. I think, city manager or city attorney? If you have questions?
I actually do have a question. So the funding expires February 2023? Is that what you'd say?
Right now, that's where all our water contracts expire. So we have delivery contracts with two delivery companies. I'm not sure if the state plans, I can't comment on whether they do plan on funding it after February 2023 or not.
Oh, I thought that's what I'd heard.
That is what you heard, because that's tentative. I mean, the hope is perhaps we could request an extension, but we've already received one extension, and the state's been pretty clear that they don't plan to do this indefinitely.
So of the $4 million that was allocated for these dry wells, and I think it was 1.293 that's been spent so far, what, where's the rest of that money? Does the county, does the county hold that money?
It's already allocated to other wells, they just haven't been spent yet, because they haven't been drilled yet, and we're doing reimbursements based on the work when it's completed.
Unfortunately, there's still a lot of folks waiting for well drillers to drill their wells. It's a very slow process. My own well took 10 months to drill.
Wow.
And the longest-running person on the program for water delivery, it took them 14 months to get their well drilled.
Go ahead.
The new wells, are they having success getting water, the new wells that are being drilled?
I haven't heard of anybody that has drilled a well that didn't have water in it. So I haven't heard any horror stories of dry, of a continued dry hole, no.
So Rhonda, they're just going deeper, and they're finding the water? So it's just waiting for the well driller?
Unfortunately, I'm my own best example, so my well that went dry was 115 feet deep, and I had to drill down to 220, I believe.
Rhonda, is the water better, or is it the same?
It's the same. Yeah, it is the same.
I believe the part in our, in our code was specific to serving customers outside of the UGB. I think, I believe that was the part that you're referencing. And it does allow us with an emergency, correct me, Mike. If there's an emergency declaration, we can serve customers outside. I'm curious what happens out after that declaration ends in February.
And that's really the question, because we went into, entered into the agreement, and at first, we didn't have the agreement when we were trying to serve the water, and then we decided to enter into the agreement so it would conform with code, because we need an agreement in order to do a unique situation like this. And with the emergency declaration, this is in the state statutes, I believe, the emergency declaration is what permits all of this to come together. So if the emergency declaration goes together, I'd have some concerns about it. I've not researched that issue particularly, though, and I don't know if my colleague, Mr. Henderson, has or not. I saw him out there. But yeah, I've not looked at that specifically, but the agreement that was sent over to the county would comply with what our code requires as far as us to be able to continue to supply water. And that was the hope of being able to continue to supply water.
Commissioner DeGroot?
So curious as to, does the code refer to by whom that emergency has to be declared? You know, the county declares emergencies, and then we ask the state to do the same, the state does the feds, you know, that type of thing.
I think that's in the ORS as a not in the code itself. The agreement that we have is just when there's a unique service that's going to take a lot of water or be outside of our normal meter situation, council's allowed to enter into an agreement with an applicant, in this case, the county was the applicant, to be able to get the water in the manner that you're getting the water right now. But to answer your, I can't answer your question right now.
So to the, but the ORS would then specify to whom needed the, the emergency needed to be declared, perhaps?
Perhaps, perhaps not. I'm not, sorry.
But that has nothing to do with, I mean, their code is a separate issue. We need only look to the example of Mullen, Merrill, Crescent. I mean, there is the ability of municipalities to sell water. That's not, there's nothing, it's just that their code doesn't, their own internal code doesn't allow them to do that without an emergency. Right. And so as we move out of this, you know, two-year, three-year, however long this quote emergency will be, we need to find solutions for people to have basic domestic water.
So the city council could change the code if they so chose, right? It's not a voter referendum, it's not...
Yeah, I mean, it's an ordinance. Ordinance has come before you all the time.
So we could change that so that we could supply water.
But there's also then, and I know it's on here, the urban growth boundary. Also, the UGMA that we have, the Urban Growth Boundary Management Agreement that we have, also touches on this, I believe. Both Mr. Willert and Mr. West are more versed, particularly in how the water plays a role in that than I am. And they're both here if you want to answer the question.
City manager? Go ahead.
I know that Robbie's been involved with this in a number of meetings since, since the beginning.
Rhonda, we'll have Robbie come and take the podium for now.
Thank you, Council and Commissioners, for letting me talk, too. A couple different things. As far as the code is addressed, there's one thing in the code that talks about the resale of water. That's the code part. It states, except by special arrangement with the city, which is why we did the MOU on this last one, no customer shall resell water received from the city, nor shall water be delivered to premises other than those specified in application for service. So in the case of a fill stand, if we made that the application of it, it could potentially be part of it. The problem is the resale part. Once this, and I'm not sure how it's going to work, but once this emergency finishes, if we sell the water to the private delivery drivers, and then they turn, sell it to the customers, that's where that water resale comes into effect. I do know from speaking with the drivers, I've met with them a few times, the way Merrill is doing it is Merrill is actually trying to get the customers to call them, buy the water, and then the delivery company sells it, and they just get paid a delivery fee. So that's one thing they've done. As far as the UGMA, what Mike was referring to is we have the UGMA, which is the Urban Growth Management Agreement, which is between the city and Klamath County. And there is a section in there, page 4.2 of that UGMA, under Section 5, talks about provisions of urban services shall occur beyond the urban growth boundary only after a determined affected, excuse me, agency considers a danger to public health as defined by ORS, Chapter 4137055 exists. And then if you follow up on that and look at that ORS, what they consider a danger to public health is a condition in which conducive to the propaganda of communicable or contagious disease-producing organisms, or which presents a reasonably clear possibility that the public generally is exposed to disease-causing issues. Then it talks about conditions of impure, inadequate domestic water, and it goes on from there. So it doesn't necessarily say who, to Commissioner DeGroot's point, it doesn't say who deems the emergency, but it discusses emergency, and it's outlined, there's about 15 bullet points of what constitutes emergency. And so that's one of the things. And then the final part of that is more of a policy. And we do have these hydrant meters, so we have given a hydrant meter to the county to use for this program. But when we give those hydrant meters to contractors at a cost rental, it's specifically in that policy, in that contract with them, that says any water taken from a city Klamath Falls hydrant or fill stand is to be utilized for dust abatement and construction purposes only. And so that's the other side of that. Part of the reason is because with a hydrant, as both Commissioner has said and Jeremy Morris and I have discussed, a hydrant's not really a viable way to provide potable water. And I know this water's probably being delivered under the understanding that it's not potable, it's more for washing and things like that. But that's the other underlying factor in the risk of using, that's why we've always said that you can't resell that water, because we don't want that to happen. And then the final part of this is, I don't know the whole logistics of it, but there is a new House Bill 4061 that came out recently that talks about, if you do provide bulk water of any kind outside of your water district, there's some extra record-keeping because of cannabis and things like that. And that goes more to the fill stand side. If we look at doing this on a temporary basis with just folks on that dry well list, it wouldn't be as much of an issue. But if we look at going to a full-scale fill stand that would be utilized, like Jackson County, Deschutes County, some other folks have, you open up, but a whole different conversation and another can of worms. But as far as code, that's kind of the few bullet points that I can probably speak on.
And Robbie, I do have a question as far as...
Happy to answer any other questions.
Our water, water capacity, as far as stretching ourselves further out, is there any danger of running out of water for the citizens?
So what I've always expressed to everyone in the, in the group, and we've talked, is the one thing is we, we too, with City of Klamath Falls, are well, are well-water, right? We have 13 groundwater wells that we use. And so we're susceptible to the same kind of reductions in services as everyone else potentially. What we've done historically, we're seeing, from what I've understood, the numbers typically drop in the, in the well usage in the summertime, right? We had an issue last year, we had a great presentation in our group from the Oregon Water Resource Department about the fact that we had no canal water last year, and a lot of these wells get recharged from the canal water. And so not having that, we saw some larger numbers last year than this year. But what we have done, we are required to provide our, our well depths and our well conditions to the state once a quarter. And then over the last couple of seasons with this high heat and the drought conditions, we've checked them periodically every two weeks to verify. We have not seen a decline in our wells, which is a great thing. But the folks that are seeing these issues have a lot more shallow wells, and they didn't see decline until recently. So ultimately, you know, it's, it's hard to say yes or no. Right now, we're not seeing it, but we have to plan for the future. And that's one thing that I've kind of been clear with Commissioner in these meetings is, a fill stand is a good temporary solution, but it's not a viable permanent solution, because if we do see some, any kind of decrease in our supply, or if we have issues with maintenance and troubleshooting, or if we, you know, last year we had the chlorine shortage, things like that were to happen, because it's outside the UGB and it's emergency, the fill stand would probably have to be the first thing to see the curtailment. So it's a, it's a possibility of a solution for these folks, but I don't know if you could consider it permanent. Maybe it's more of a temporary.
All right. And Commissioner, you are looking at temporary for, for, this is just a Band-Aid for now? Or is it, are we looking longer term?
It's sort of a big, thick, heavy band-aid. The hope is that, actually, we're trying, we've used the analogy in our... The hope is that, actually, we're trying, we've used the analogy in our emergency work group that we're trying to build a bridge to permanent solutions. So our hope would be that one of those permanent, well, I'll put it this way, as people, again, continue to likely have dry, unless we get six feet of snow every, the water master says we would need six feet of snow every year for the next five years to really get in good shape. I hope that happens, but I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say, let's talk about if that doesn't happen. So if that doesn't happen, the bridge includes a lot of things. It includes being able to direct people to hopefully more, being able to more timely get a well drilled because we've been working with the well drillers, KCC is trying to develop a well drilling program, there's an ask in front of the legislature to get them money and equipment to do that. I mean, there's, we're, we're attacking this from a lot of different angles, but frankly, it, it needs to be attacked from a lot of different angles. So this angle in terms of either a water fill station or private delivery, being able to contract with the city of Klamath Falls and buy water, these are some of the solutions that we hope will entail a suite of solutions for people as this continues to happen.
Great, great. Any questions of Robbie? Questions, comments, do you guys want to discuss this? City manager, do you have any thoughts?
I'm guessing the site of the fill station, the permanent fill station would be at the county shop where it's currently being, no?
No. The, the issue with the county road shop is we can't really be having the public there sort of all hours of the day, on the weekends. It's not necessarily, I mean, there are safety issues, there's, this again has been set up very temporarily. I would say if the city was willing to develop some sort of fill station, it would make sense for it to be somewhere more, more public, frankly. The county road shop isn't necessarily a public place. It's okay for the delivery drivers because we now have a relationship with them, but having just sort of customers come in all day would be not, it's not very conducive to the work that's done at the county road shop. There's lots of heavy equipment.
Funded by the county, out of, out of the?
Perhaps. I mean, that is something we'd be willing to, and again, I don't speak for my colleagues, but my thought is that perhaps the creation of it could be a partnership, but it would have to lie likely with the city because the city's the one with the water as the resource. But the creation of it is certainly something that county could talk with you about.
Yeah, I, I kind of think that we're in a similar situation to the county that, I mean, even though we do have wells and we do deliver water, we don't publicly deliver it outside of, you know, out of a pipe. We're not really set up either.
Yet.
So I guess we, we are kind of in a similar situation there.
Yeah, other than that you have wells and we don't.
Yeah. I mean, if I may, if it comes down to the location, if that's what we're talking about, if we can get past everything else and we're just talking about location, I think that's frankly, one of the easier discussions to have. If we can get past the fact that we can get water delivered, whether that needs to be, you know, better defined as to who can receive these deliveries, if we're just talking about folks within the community that have reported wells that have gone dry, we work with the water master, you know, however we want to go about and define that, where, we can get creative on where, you know? Spots come to my mind and, and then I open my mouth in a meeting before I talk to somebody, but I think of like the fairgrounds. I would be more than happy to talk to them about setting up a spot. Quite frankly, they'll just give it away anyway sometimes to people that are in need. So probably shouldn't say that in a public meeting, but hey, guess what? If people are thirsty, we, we give them water, you know? So that might be an idea as well. And there, county council just puts his head down and shakes his head.
Counselor, top.
My recommendation would be that the two public works departments get together and propose something and bring it back to both bodies and the legal council, figure out legally how it can be done and come up with something that we have concrete to look at. More than long enough for anything that will help those people, but if they come up with a specific plan between the legal council and the two public works, I, I'm for it.
I appreciate that, counselor, and I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. I think with Shemalt and Malin receiving water from another area too, I think that's going to help. I don't know how many people are out there that are using water or needing water.
I want to say it's about 45 out in the Shemalt, Beaver Marsh, Lapine area. And then there's our other counties in Oregon that are starting to experience dry wells. We're just, we just, we had the first and we have the most, you know? So we're writing the book on the well response for counties and states at this point. And I've been in several work groups with the state and other state partners developing a plan for the next county this happens to unfortunately. So, but yeah, it is, and we can't just open up the ground unfortunately and see how much water is in there. And as homeowners, you don't expect your well to go dry, right? It seems like it's an unlimited, I mean, how many people knew even how their well worked before this happened to them? So I didn't know how my well worked before this happened. So, but it has been great, the, the city and the county helping the homeowners, providing water, providing storage space for the tanks, trying to figure out solutions for homeowners, is very appreciated by the homeowners. Because I talked to a lot of homeowners who would just be at a complete loss if they didn't have this assistance. So, so thank you.
Very good.
Any more questions for me? I'll stick around in case anybody else has more questions.
Very good. Okay, so at this point, would you like to get a consensus on what we're gonna do?
Well, I agree with Dan's suggestion. I think we gotta get the, the public works for the county and the city together and come up with a plan to present to us.
Okay. Commissioner, or Counselor Blaine?
Yes, I agree. I mean, I wouldn't want to start tackling this, this plan or this problem because I don't know how best to tackle it. And I think that we need to utilize those departments that have the knowledge to propose a plan for us.
Commissioner Hensley?
I think that's a smart plan, thank you.
Okay. And Commissioner Morris, or Minty, sorry.
I say it wrong sometimes, so I understand. Yes, I think that as so long as it's clear that everybody wants to helping and develop a solution, I know, I, I know our, both public works and, and your public works, I mean, their, the, their lens is generally different than an elected's lens, so I, I hope that everybody is telling them that we want to solve this as a problem and, and I have the utmost confidence they can come up with something great.
Excellent. And Commissioner Degroot?
Yeah, it's a great idea. Like I, I mentioned, we have a lot of smart people in the back of the room, I'm sure they can figure it out.
Okay, we'll go with that then. That concludes this portion. Onto 2.2, which is the historical downtown monuments, which is the same as 2.3. Pardon me? It'll, it'll be discussed under 2.3. So it's the static F-15 jet display and requested by Commissioner Hensley, reporting.
Thank you, Mayor. This is kind of an interesting view. My entire career, I was at the podium talking to you guys up here. Now I'm up here looking down at the podium, so it's kind of an interesting view for me. So thank you for allowing me to put this on the agenda. I'm the new kid on the block, so to speak, I'm the, probably the most newly-elected official up here. I see the chief's probably been here since, oh, you probably met Jesus, right? Okay. So if I overstep, please tell me because I'm still trying to learn my way, trying to learn process, trying to learn legality and those types of things. So recently, as, as everyone in this room knows, the county commissioners and the city council have voted to erect this monument of a, of a F-15, a retired F-15 jet from Kingsley Field in Veterans Park. Let me start by saying I voted yes on this. I think that the monument is an excellent idea. I fully support that monument and I'm looking forward to demonstrating Klamath County's commitment to our military, all branches of, of our military in a way that's meaningful. This is a very unique opportunity in that we get to utilize a jet from Kingsley Field that has flown over Klamath County thousands of times, and everyone in this room at some point has looked up and watched this jet fly by and made comments about the sounds of freedom or being an American or things like that. So I, I really do like this display, I like this idea, and I'm fully committed to it. That being said, all of us in this room have had countless conversations with community members since we voted yes, had multiple phone calls, had multiple emails, and all of that caused me to take a pause and really think about what's best for our community and what's the best way to honor veterans and those types of things. I've had the privilege to meet with many people in this room personally and have those heart-to-heart conversations, and that's why I wanted it to be on this agenda today. So the counselors and the commissioners can have a very open, a very honest, a very accountable and a very transparent conversation about moving forward with this static display of the F-15. That being said, I would like to maybe propose something that has come up in many conversations I've had with people in this room, sitting in the audience, and, and a common theme that has come up many times is that people do in fact like the idea of the display, but maybe just not in Veterans Park. And I have heard that come up time and time again, and again, that has caused me to kind of pause and think about what that looks like. So I'd like to offer an alternative for conversation with the counselors today and the commissioners and get your thoughts on it. And then come up with a, we've all voted yes on this already, so if you all tell me, Dave, it's done, we're moving on, I get it. And there's the piece that I have to swallow and understand legality. I get that. But might I add that maybe, maybe, just maybe, the county take over the project and we take the lead on the project and we put it someplace more centrally located within the UGB, maybe the fairgrounds, for example. And we move it away from Veterans Park and we put our heads together about some other really cool things we can do in Veterans Park as well. I've heard a lot of times that there's, you know, other opportunities to, to use this, this COVID relief money for and things like that, and I'm not here to hammer all those out again, and I want everybody to understand, lots of you have given me lots of great ideas. And that doesn't mean we still can't do them. There have been amazing ideas that have come up, that there is money to do, so I, I value those comments. But maybe, just maybe, the county takes the lead, we put it somewhere else and we do something else in Veterans Park in the future.
Comments? Counselor Blaine?
Um, what is the logistics of that? Is that something that we can even do?
And we do have Mark Willert here, or city attorney?
The, the overriding concern would be that it was the city that applied for the jet and the jet was given to the city. That would be something we'd have to talk to the base about to see if, what their thoughts would be. We had formed the partnership with each entity pledging the money to bring this to fruition. So I, I just don't know because we get the feds involved and you guys all know me well enough to know what I think of the feds getting involved in things. But that would be the piece that we'd have to look into is whether or not it would be feasible to transfer because if the project was to go onto county property, then it would make sense that it would, that the county would take it over. I, I agree with that aspect of it. But until we ask the, the base what the process would be to transfer, I cannot answer your question.
Thank you. Counselor Morris?
So I like the idea, thank you Commissioner Hensley for bringing this up. I like the idea of exploring alternative locations. My thought would be that because there probably are still some unanswered questions, and I'm not convinced that necessarily the county needs to take the lead, I think it's admirable that the city has been instrumental in this project and I, I don't want to sort of take it out from under them, but I think we can collectively explore alternative locations. If, if we all come away with consensus that perhaps Veterans Park isn't the best spot for this, I would love to have conversations around ideas related to a, a better spot and also seek clarity on some of the legal issues around who takes the lead. I'm, I'm happy for our friends at the city to continue pushing forward and I'm happy to work with them on perhaps an alternative location.
Thank you. And Commissioner Degroot?
So I appreciate council's concern. I had the exact same concern. I spoke with one of the majors out at the base and he assured me that if, because I've been approached with the same concept, that if we wanted to move the location, even if it was outside the city limits, that the project could still move forward. His largest concern was timeline. If we were going to make a change like this, it needed to be done very rapidly. He did not, so we were, and I'm gonna mess up the numbers, and so we were something like 70th or something like that in line to receive a jet. Just so happened, we were able to actually get one of our own from Kingsley Field and we made magic and went from 70 whatever to number one and boom, we can get a jet. Should we allow this opportunity to pass us by and not accept that jet within a very rapid timeframe and have this figured out, we could lose that opportunity, and so that would be my biggest concern. I'm not gonna get up in soapbox, but I can tell you I am a huge fan of this project, regardless of where it goes. I'm not gonna speak for every veteran, but I can speak for one. Right? And a lot of pride comes from hearing those jets and seeing those jets and living in a community that quite frankly, we are a military town. I don't know how to break it to everyone, but we are a military town. I am a military kid, right? I'm a son of a veteran and I have a son in the army. And I'm a veteran, and I believe in it. One of the biggest things that we have, sorry, now I am gonna soapbox. When I became, when I got elected, my first term, people asked me, what is the biggest concern you have? What do you see as the biggest issue we have within our community? It's community pride. We don't work enough on our community pride. We don't work enough on being proud of our community. And it's those things that unify us, that inspire us to be proud of our community, like those jets flying over, that I will always support and memorializing it in some way. To me, we couldn't be doing a, a better service to our community.
Very good. And we do have Mark Willert. Could you, would you like to come up for just a minute? I've got a question as far as how far we've gotten on the site and how much we've already invested in that site.
So at this point in time, we've done the topography, so the survey's been done and the geotechnical analysis, because it's a pretty large footing that has to go in the ground to support this structure that's, you know, 40 some feet wide and very tall and long. So that and some engineering costs, I have to go back and look at the bill, but I'm gonna, if I just shoot from the hip, I'd say probably between $10,000 and $15,000 has probably been expended so far on the site that we're at right now.
Okay, super. Does anybody else have a question for Mark Willert?
Mark, do you, do you see any major delays if the site were to be moved?
Uh, no, I mean, it's, we could, we could get someone in there to do a new survey on the new site and new geotechnical analysis, I mean, it's gonna set us back a little bit. I think, I think the biggest concern is making sure we've addressed that we are going to take the plane, we have a plan for it. That was kind of the impression I got from the Air Force. If we go wherever we happen to go, they just want to know that it's not on hold indefinitely until we can figure something out. So if you all like to move the location, I think we can probably act on that pretty fast, and I don't think that's gonna affect our ability to get this plane.
Very good. Thank you, thank you. So I just think as a, a community that does honor their vets, we honor their jets as well. So.
Do you mind if I take that?
You can take that one. Alrighty. So I'd like to see a, if, a consensus on this. So, or where are we?
I'd like to express for, I have received a lot of input from people who don't think the money should be spent, period, after I voted in favor of it. And, and I, I am concerned from my perspective whether we had adequate public input into making that decision. I'm not necessarily reconsidering. not necessarily reconsidering my vote, but I am concerned about whether the public was adequately advised and allowed to speak on the subject. And I would be in favor of moving it out to the fairgrounds and pursuing Tricia's idea about ecotourism down in Veterans Park and some of the other things, the ideas that she's presented to us. But I also want to acknowledge the folks in the front row here that are opposed to, they think the money could be spent on a lot of different projects other than this one. And that gets into a debate about, you know, whether you should ever spend money, I guess, on anything aesthetic or whether this is aesthetic, whether you build statues of Grebes, you know, does that have an intrinsic value or not? And the community, I think, as the commissioner said, part of it is pride in the community. And it's a tough balance to decide whether you're going to spend that kind of money on a homeless shelter as opposed to putting up a, something that will inspire people to like the community, love the community more, and to pay tribute to the military because we are a military town. So I am having some questions in my mind after talking to these folks whether we had adequate public input. And I know some of it was before I was even on the, on the commission apparently, on the council. So my, at this point, my input would be I would favor looking at alternative places to put it. And I would ask the members to consider whether we had adequate input from the public because I was a little surprised at the reaction I got after we voted for it.
Yeah. City Attorney, did you have any thoughts on that? I think we had exhausted that as far as we did have the process.
Thank you, Mayor. In looking back at the minutes of the different work sessions and the different meetings, if my memory serves me correctly, it was either the first or second meeting in May where this came, this issue came before council under other matters. And there was a presentation and at that time council voted for it. But that had been after a couple of different work sessions for what to do with the ARPA money. So there had been some work sessions in the previous part. And then it came up during other matters and that's when it came forward, I believe. And then it was at the meeting, the next meeting or the meeting after that, that we put forward the MOU with the county for the matching funds. So, and that's the history. As far as beyond that, I can't answer that for you, Councilman. But it was back in May in an open meeting.
Okay. Any more questions or comments? Commissioner or Counselor Blaine?
Thank you. I agree that we should seek other, and I'm open to other alternatives, but I also think we should move forward as we have. I think we have some other stuff coming up next week and we can be moving forward and not have everything set in stone yet, but be open to those alternatives as they come to us. So I think securing that jet and making sure we get that is important. So I'd like us to see, to see us moving forward and then be open to those alternatives.
I agree.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'll just add one more thing. Through the course of conversations with many community members, like I mentioned a minute ago, I want to reiterate, I've heard some amazing ideas for ARPA funds. I just want to make sure that I state publicly and remind people that November, the county commissioners are going to open the second round of projects for ARPA funding. So if there are people or organizations that want to provide some more projects to the county commissioners, we will start accepting those in November. And you can go to our website to learn more information.
Thank you. And that's important. So I'd like to get a consensus on direction. So we heard from Counselor Blaine. Is there anybody else have a thought or idea? You have all the comments? Is that all we need? Okay. So we have all the information. So we'll go on to the next.
Yeah, just real quick. I would just, I like the idea that we're considering best location, what those other alternatives are. I think being very thoughtful about where we place the monument is very important. It's something that we're going to place that's going to outlive all of us, quite hopefully anyway. So that being said, I also think that we probably need to be fairly expedient in the decision on where we're going to locate it. I know that there was a timeline and a hope that there would be some type of an unveiling for the Fourth of July. Can that still be met? Who knows? I think a lot of people are going to have to work very hard regardless of where we put it. Should that matter, I'm not certain. But I do think that we should be placing some type of a timeline on ourselves to make a decision. And so that's what I would propose to my colleagues and to counsel is how long do we need to deliberate? How many more conversations do we need to have? And when do we think we could make a decision so that we could give direction to staff? I know, I'm seeing a shaking head. They're probably thinking, my goodness, if you're going to ask me to pivot, I got to pick up the phone at seven o'clock tomorrow morning and we need to get to work. So that would be just for thought.
Commissioner Minty?
Yeah. So in terms of expediency, this has been great conversation. It, I might offer that, to me, it makes some sense for perhaps both governing bodies to tag a liaison person to coordinate with the other governing body. And that way, if we're not able to all get together like this, we can at least empower a couple of people to work together. So, you know, the Board of Commissioners designate a liaison, if you will, or somebody empowered to sort of talk with somebody from the city and perhaps they can collaborate on a solution. What I heard is everybody wants to move forward and also everybody supports the idea of perhaps, actually, I don't mean to speak for you, maybe you didn't directly say that, but sort of, people are okay with moving forward, but perhaps at an, I mostly heard an alternative location was desired. So I would be completely comfortable with either of my colleagues on the board being the designee from the governing, from the Board of Commissioners. It does not need to be me. And then maybe the council having someone.
Very good. I think that's a good idea.
I think that's a great idea.
Jonathan? Jonathan, so you'll take that? So, so we'll have City Manager? Okay, very good. Then we will finish. Okay, go ahead.
I just moved to designate Commissioner Hensley to represent the county in this matter.
I know. I was going to say, there we go. Very good. All righty. We're moving forward here. 2.4, a mental health guardian position requested by City Manager Jonathan Tykert. Reporting.
Mayor, I may turn this over to Mike to visit with. This is a signed agreement. I'll just start. This is a signed agreement that we entered into back in April to fund this position. I believe at the time the city funded up to $25,000. And since that time, Lake County has withdrawn from their portion of the contract.
I think we're just, just one moment and allow you to clear the room if you'd like at this point. Anybody that wants to clear the room, they can do that so now?
There could be some really cool stuff we talk about. Just saying. No?
Okay, go ahead, City Manager.
So honorable electeds, this is just to seek your input on what direction that you think that we should go in this, in this situation. Lake County has pulled out of the agreement. The question would be whether we want to continue to fund this position or not. And with that, I think I'll turn that over to Mike.
We just had more communication with Kathleen Rutherford earlier today. She shared with us that the Lake County did pull out. They were putting up about half the money. And then between city, county, and I think KBTH, all of those other entities were involved in putting together some money. So now we've gone from the whole pie to just half of the pie. The state is not able to step in at this time. Bless you. They, I think if you guys remember the terms, it was that eventually, the hope was that during the next budgeting period, the state would step in and start to budget for this position because it would be a state position, taking care of the guardianship between both Klamath County and Lake County. I did ask Kathleen a follow-up question and she basically said, whatever entities put in would be the ones that would be serviced. So if the entities here in Klamath County chose to fund, basically double the funding to cover for what's missing, then the guardianship would be strictly for Klamath County. And that's really where we're at is essentially it would take all the entities involved to double their funding to make up for what Lake County backed out of.
Counselor Tofel?
It's not, it's not been filled.
It's not been ever filled?
Correct.
Wow.
As far as I know, it's never been filled, at least for what we signed. The, I think the city was the first that signed it. And I don't know where it went from there, but the position that was proposed as a result of that agreement has never been formally created.
We have no idea really yet what the demand for this position is.
Correct. Other than the information that was provided earlier by Ms. Rutherford during one of her presentations.
Counselor Blaine?
That was basically my question. So its position's never been filled and the services haven't been utilized at this point?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
But as she pointed out, there is a need for it. And I think, I think she very eloquently talked about the need for this because unfortunately, families are, people aren't taking care of their, their old people anymore. They're dumping them. And it's becoming, as we age, it's getting harder and harder. So I really feel like we need to, that there is a need there and we need to do something about it.
I also support, thank you for saying that, Counselor Studentberg. I also support this program. For the reminder of Commissioner DeGroot and Commissioner Hensley, you may not have been here when we did this, but we are funding it out of developmental disability. And they've, our, Dr. Maxi has been very gracious and supportive. So I don't, I don't foresee there being, unless the board had an issue, I don't foresee Dr. Maxi having an issue with upping the funding. And so my recommendation and what I would support is upping the funding to fill it. Because I also was very swayed by Ms. Rutherford's very passionate and compassionate reasons for wanting to get this position.
Okay. So Lakeview would not be involved in it? It would just be Klamath County?
Correct.
Did they give any reason for pulling out of it? Was it just the money economics or was there something else going on?
I'm not sure. I don't know if they just, the funds were available for a certain amount of time and they were not utilized within that timeframe. It's unclear to me. But that was the sense that I got, is that they were earmarked, they weren't used, and they went somewhere else.
Okay.
Commissioner Morris, appreciate that. And I remember that as well. And I typically don't forget numbers, but I don't recall the cost. And the...
I want to say ours was 25,000?
I know that the city was about 25 and I thought that maybe the county was at 30. But it was, it was between both entities, it was between 50,000 total that we were putting forth from this community. Plus, again, I don't remember if KBTH was providing money or they were providing services under the agreement. I don't remember that part.
And I think the hospital in Lake County was, had pledged 50,000 and that was a considerable amount to it.
So it was the hospital in Lake County that pledged those dollars, not the county itself? Is my hearing that correctly?
Yeah, I think the hospital district, I would have to, it was someone over in Lake County. And I don't remember specifically which entity it was. So I don't want to get, I don't want to get one entity mad at me at the risk of the other.
We got Finance Director Jess.
I was working on this while I was playing City Manager. And Lake County itself had 5,000. Lake County Health District had 50,000. And then they had additional one-time $20,000 grant. That wasn't going to go on to future years. It was just going to be the 50,000 with the increase in the future years. And then KBTH did do some, but I can't remember. I believe the county was 30 or 35 and the city I know was 25.
So I'm hearing a combined cost for the position and the program to be somewhere in the 110 range on an annual basis?
Yes.
And the ask anyway from Ms. Rutherford is that the county and the city split that or come to some type of mutual agreement to figure out how to fund that?
Essentially, we double what we've already put in and that would come pretty darn close.
Is that something we could do? Fund, fund wise?
We can't do it in this setting, but I mean, we could certainly, you know, if I'm directed, I'd be happy to reach back out to Ms. Rutherford and ask her if she could rework the agreement in such a manner, because this agreement came from the states, I have to go through all their processes. If I could ask for her to propose a new agreement with the pro-rata shares of the parties that are here in the county, just up to the way that they would be. So let's say if you put in 30, double it up to 60, and we double ours up to 50, something like that, if that makes sense. I'd be happy to reach back out to her and ask her to do that.
I think that that would be prudent and then we could take it to a finance meeting as a board. One of the questions I would have for her that I wouldn't want to spring on her is obviously the service area has been reduced considerably. Is the cost the same given the reduced service area?
Yeah.
I have one question. SkyLakes showing any interest in helping fund this?
If my memory serves me correctly, I believe that SkyLakes was listed in the original agreement, but I don't remember seeing him in the final agreement. And I don't know all of the background. I don't know if it was tentative. When we received that first agreement, it was sort of a wish list of people we want to partner with. I don't know how the different names got on there. So.
Just a comment, and this is very limited knowledge from my standpoint, but I was involved in some of this years ago. The hospitals are the one that really like to utilize this so that they can move people out of their facilities. They like to have guardianships appointed to people and so they can start getting them taken care of and moving. So I would think that they might want to participate. And I'm just not sure the need, there's, you know, somebody told me that there aren't any private people doing it anymore. We used to have a handful.
Yeah. We used to have Joe, yeah.
Joe and Sandy Brown.
I don't know. I question the need for it. That's just my personal opinion.
I think there definitely is a need, but we'd need to get the numbers. It would be good to know what, what kind of need, what is that? Yeah. That'd be good. So anything more on that? All right. 2.5, federal emergency management FEMA seclusion area floodplain study requested by City Manager Jonathan Tykert.
Commissioners, council, I'll be turning this over to Joe Wall to discuss this. I'll just introduce the little, the little that I do know about this project. So FEMA has come in, they've done a floodplain mapping. This would be two years ago. Is that right, Joe?
You know, I, the preliminary floodplain mapping process, it seems like it's been my entire time at the city, about nine years. So.
They identified an area, a seclusion, temporary seclusion area, which is a new type of floodplain map. And there are impacts to the city and the county. And I guess the proposal to the, to the electeds here is how they would like to proceed with this. I'll go ahead and have Joe.
I think this might be a very base informational overview and then with, we'll say, future budget allocations, it could be determined if anything wants to move forward. I was a little bit involved with the, I guess, outreach for the making of preliminary floodplain maps. So right now, we have floodplain maps that date to about 1984, 85. They're on these large sheets of paper that we pull out in our planning office, not They're on these large sheets of paper that we pull out in our planning office, not very easy to locate. There has been a longstanding effort countywide to update the FEMA for preliminary floodplain maps. We have those preliminary floodplain maps today. As part of it, I do think it's important to note, in past floodplain maps, there was always something that was included as a levy, and therefore, certain items or certain areas weren't part of floodplains. So the Southern Pacific Railroad Line, when it was established, now Union Pacific Railroad Line, coming up from state lines, so the California-Oregon border, all the way following the Klamath River, and then kind of following Lake Juana until it goes to the Union Pacific Yard where the Amtrak station is, that was effectively always considered a levy for flood management purposes. Because that was not its intention as to why it was constructed, and it is not necessarily maintained or certified as such, it is no longer being included as a functional levy as part of the preliminary floodplains. As a result of that, there is a large amount of land that would impact the city, so facilities around the airport, and then a large amount of land, Klamath County, south of city limits, kind of almost following, I'll say, historic area of Lower Klamath Lake, but Klamath Irrigation District, drainage district, et cetera. So at this point, I'm just going to say, I am by no means any kind of expert on floodplain mapping, environmental conditions, et cetera. But we have had a little bit of preliminary meetings with Jeremy Morris, Klamath County Public Works, and some others, I think, to figure out just what the best solution is. So first off, what are the impacts? If we're included within this one percent annual flood area, what does that then mean for all of the property owners within that area? What does that mean for the airport, other uses? So I think we want to find out what the true impacts are, and then what it would really take to, we'll say, file an appeal or to certify levies, coordination with railroad, et cetera. So at this point, I think more than anything, it's just an informational share with the council and commissioners as part of the new preliminary floodplain mapping process. But I imagine additional items will be brought forward, as I think I work with Jeremy Morris. There have been some other stakeholders that have been involved, and just figuring out what that route is. I will say it probably would involve working with a consultant, outsourcing that. So again, I imagine a future ask. I just know Jonathan, you had walked in my office one day, we started talking about this, and it's like, ooh. Right now, this isn't what they call a seclusion area. It's important to note that, from what I understand, that's a five-year period. So the areas will not be included as part of the one percent annual flood area when the maps are established, but that is only a temporary reprise. So within that period, we would look at consultant services and come back to both bodies.
Very good. Questions or comments?
Just a quick comment, if I could, Marissa. It's kind of a big deal. I don't think people realize how big of a deal it truly is, and what the impacts it has to all of the landowners within that area. Flood insurance is extraordinarily expensive for folks that have never priced it out. Just take your homeowner's policy and add a zero, and you get pretty close. So what that would do to not just the homeowners and, within that area, who are never going to experience a flood, because this levy operates as a levy, just never been certified, and would do to any properties that we own, when we're going to work with our insurance carriers as well, should we own properties within that area, which we do. So a, an investment to get that certified and permanently secluded is probably has a decent ROI.
In agreement? Any, any, any comments or questions on that?
I would, just a brief comment, that it's ironic that at the beginning of the meeting, we're talking about how we've been in drought for several years, and now we're talking about floods, so.
If only.
Everyone's watching, that is like, what are, what are these people doing?
Okay, so I've been looking for consensus on this.
Just a quick question.
Go ahead. Counsel Blaine?
So with the levy, and obviously, the railroad owns it. What kind of partnership is, I know, I know historically how that works. I know. But, I mean, is that something we would need to have their buy-in on, if they're going to be certified, if they're...
Absolutely. I could say the railroad is in the transport business, not necessarily the levy business. I know that's not the core function of them, transporting. But again, additional conversation has to be had. I think a lot more data analysis, maybe almost through an appeal process, where it isn't necessarily the certification of a levy, but just where you look at certain floodways and how much water you can release, looking at certain floods in the past. I was reading through certain hundred-year flood events, I believe in the mid nineteen sixties, and how land was impacted. So I almost think like a deeper data analysis might be a separate way. For example, when you look at the Lost River Divergent Canal and how it functions, would this area truly be impacted the way it has been kind of blanketly designated?
Thank you.
Did you want to say anything? Anybody else have a comment or, so the consensus looks like more, more of a study on this?
This was just informational. It's, there's no, it will be coming back.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Okay. If there are no more questions or comments, we will close that out then. Two point six. Transient Room Tax Recalibration, a visual spreadsheet to be reviewed by City Manager Jonathan Tiger.
Madam Mayor, so I had asked for this discussion item with, with council and commissioners. This is, so this is our receipt from this first quarter. This is paid out on a quarterly basis. It's kind of a convoluted formula in how we arrived to where we're at with this. But I'll, I'll try and explain it the best that I can. So of the transient room tax that's collected each month, there is a one percent that's taken off the top that is, that is withheld for the operation of the, of the tourism tax. Of the remaining ninety-nine percent, distribution is twenty-five percent to the county. That's Klamath County Museum, County Tourism Fund, and then the County Special Revenue Fund for competitive grants. They keep that twenty-five percent. Of the remaining seventy-five percent, there's one-sixth of that which is held for tourism, which I understand was formerly the Chamber of Commerce, then incorporated cities at thirty-eight percent, and any remaining balance is county fairgrounds of that amount. So it's a, it's a difficult process to wade through this when you look at it, but basically, the, it has the amounts that the city received, which you can see there for that first quarter was two hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars was collected, and that amount that was returned to the city was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight. So basically, less than half of the money that's collected within city limits comes to the city of Klamath Falls, forty-seven percent. That's the simple math. When you look at it, it's, it's difficult to understand this. Mike and I have looked at this a number of times, but basically, the city gets ninety-eight percent of the thirty-eight percent that's allocated to the municipalities, of the sixty-two percent, which is allocated for non-tourism and county fairgrounds, of the seventy-five percent that's allocated, of the ninety-nine percent. So that's the, that's the math of it. I'm just wondering if there is a simpler solution that we can come to, and I wanted to gauge the elected's opinion on, is this something that we can open up and, and look at this formula and readjust it in the future?
Commissioner Minty?
So we do have our legal counsel here as well. My understanding is, this is the formula that was passed by voters and is now in ordinance slash, I mean, I'll, I'll use the wrong terms, but it was passed by voters as this. So my understanding is unless it were to be returned to the voters for a readjustment of the formula, that the formula is what the formula is, because that's legally what the formula is. And I'm looking at you, Counsel, to tell me if I'm, if I'm playing lawyer when I shouldn't be, but...
Hi, I'm Marcus Henderson, Klamath County Council. The issue with the separation, and I wish I'd have known this had been on here, because I'd have brought a little better presentation, is there's a grandfathered amount in there, and then anytime the county goes for a greater amount, that is statutorily earmarked half for tourism, and then the county can do what it wants with the other half. I think it's fifty-fifty. Maybe it's not quite that amount, but I wish, again, I'd been prepared, because the new amounts have to be allocated differently. So that's why when you look up there, you see the seventy-five, because there was a difference. At some point, they went out for a ballot measure, and then the difference in the increase, so if we were at six percent and went up to seven, that one percent is now allocated according to the new statute.
And that's how I understand it as well. Originally, it was six percent, went up to eight percent, and that's where the twenty-five percent that the county stays with.
Exactly. So that's that two percent difference.
Understand. I understand the one percent as well, which makes sense.
But so that potentially, I guess, you know, if, if that was what folks wanted to do, could look at the two percent, but it has been approved. So they went out recently, what was the last time, for an increase, and that failed, so. That's where we stand. Sorry, I didn't know it was going to be on the agenda, so I didn't have a better primer on it.
Sure.
Thanks.
Very good. Any more questions or comments on this agenda item? All right. Is that, go ahead?
I, I guess I would like some clarification. I'm going to, sorry, I'm going to put you on the spot, just in case I miss something there. And I understand the part about, it went from the six percent, voters voted on it going up to eight percent. And that's fine, that we have the breakdown of the seventy-five percent that's grandfathered in, at what the calculations are. But when it was originally set up, the County Chamber of Commerce was still there that took the one-sixth off the top. And then, I, I guess it's just the strangeness, and I know that Ms. Noel is here, and so maybe she could shed some light. Oh, wait, did she, oh, darn it, she left. I was hoping maybe she could shed some light, because this, the formulation just is so weird. And since it's in ordinance, I think that it could be addressed by the Board of County Commissioners. If we could just work on something that makes a little more sense, instead of the one-sixth of this, the fifty percent of that, fifty percent over here, the balance here, it's just so darn convoluted that it's, you know, it, it is difficult to follow. And so all we know is we're collecting two hundred and seventy-two thousand and, and recovering less than half of that. And so, quite frankly, we're looking at the bottom line, too.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. All right. So if there are no more questions or comments, we will go on to urban go, number two point seven. Urban Growth Boundary, UGB Development Request by City Manager Jonathan Tiger.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to turn this over to Joe Wall to present this also.
This is just another super brief update. Been having a conversation with my counterpart, Eric Noble, with Klamath County Planning. I know we've had very longstanding efforts when we look at the urban growth boundary to come up with more, I'm going to say, comprehensive similar standards, so that it is not confusing as to, hey, I'm developing on this side of jurisdiction versus the other. Some of the items that we have talked to him about, and I'm going to address this more with the new council, but there's been conversation about who implements land use for properties that are immediately contiguous to city limits, and that will be receiving water and will be immediately annexed. And does it make sense, for example, to annex properties that may not be conforming right off the bat to make them non-conforming? A number of cities have certain agreements where those lands immediately contiguous are administered by the cities. That's something I've talked to Eric about. Other item, I just want to make a note. I know he's kind of looking at his LDC, Land Development Code. We have been looking at our community development ordinance. Similarly, we're looking at our public works engineering standards between Klamath County Public Works and City Public Works. So there is a lot of effort between internal staff to think about how we could align some of our standards, and this will then be an item that comes forward between planning commissioners, commissioners in the future.
Very good. Commissioner DeGroot?
Sure. I might jump in. So this is something that we've been discussing since I got here, right? So it's been about six years, and probably predates me by a few decades. And quite frankly, it will go on until at some point, and everybody always tells me not to talk about annexation, but at some point, most likely in my lifetime, definitely within my children's, the UGB will be annexed into the city of Klamath Falls. It has to happen eventually, right? Just look at the cycle of how things happens. It does occur at some point. So as we're moving forward, should the standards then, within the urban growth boundary, be, should we be working on bringing them more and more aligned, knowing that in the future, and if we don't do that, are we doing a disservice to future generations that have our job? Or that has his job, or his job, or his job, because that's what they're really looking at, you know? I know that we've done this a lot already within our transportation system, trying to look at how, you know, where do we require sidewalks? Where do we require drainage systems? Where do we, you know, what are, what are road widths, things like that. But it also, you know, the citizens need to understand that it, there has to be some uniformity within the community, because at some point, it's going to be one. And we're just going to deliver to our successors some huge can of worms for them to try to peel through on why I can't do this or that today when I could have yesterday.
Commissioner Hensley?
Commissioner DeGroot is right. We've been having these conversations for a long, long time, and it's time. I'm really proud that you took that leap today, and I'm going to take it with you, Commissioner, because we're going to have to annex. I think it's time to start having some real hard, honest, and I'm going to use transparent again, I've used it once, right, I'm going to say it again. But it's time that we start having those, those hard conversations. We need to talk about policing the UGB in a different way, to provide better policing resources to the urban, or excuse me, the rural communities. So we need to take a real hard look at the services that we're duplicating on. It's a waste of taxpayer funds, in my opinion. And how do we streamline those efforts and come up with a common identity, common goals, and common vision for our future? And I think the time's now. So, thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm beginning to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I've been waiting about fifty years to hear that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
And it is just talking about it, and, and there is a need. It is, it is very important. So at this point, we are on other matters. Anybody have anything else? I'd like to share that I've been on the LOC's mayor's group, trying to get some legislation for homelessness, and what we can put, what we could bring up there. And, and it's looking really good. It's looking like we've all gotten together, and we've come up with four, it's just moving forward. So that's a good thing, and we'll see how, what happens.
Good.
Go ahead.
A brief comment. I just want to thank Joe Wall and John Bellum for taking up the issue related to the city property next to the Baldwin Museum. The county has been really committed to sprucing up the Baldwin, and as part of that, I've been bugging those guys of that, that city property is a great space for some sort of natural park. I, I really like, there's, there's citizens working on a proposal for sort of a, making that whole, really developing that whole area as a cultural or historical corner, that includes some sort of water, how do I want to say it, a river interpretive center to explain Klamath water issues. The, you know, then you've got the Link River Trail, you've got Veterans Park, you've got the Baldwin, you've got the Fable, you've got all kinds of activity going on in that area. That would be really, really nicely developed as a bookend to town, and I just want to compliment Joe and John for their work to start on that park part, and then we'll just build from there. So thank you to them for taking that on.
I don't want to take any more time, but this, this is, will be an item that's coming back before the council and commissioners. We have engaged or are engaging design services with a landscape architect to come up with a vision. We feel once there's a vision in place, we could then start talking about budgets and come back to both bodies. So it is being worked on.
That's great, Joe.
We'll be coming before our Parks Advisory Board tomorrow. As a matter of fact, for discussion, their regularly scheduled meeting at eleven-thirty for those interested in attending. So it will be a matter of discussion at the board tomorrow.
That'd be great. If we could incorporate a waterfall feature, because everybody's asking about that waterfall. Where, where are falls? My emails. Okay, so anybody else? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
You, you do it.
Okay. Very good. On favor?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting's adjourned, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel. Joe. Joe, don't leave.